We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Weber County Commission meeting. It's maybe two minutes after 10:00, so we might be two minutes late, sorry, on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2019. We welcome you all here. Glad you're, especially Lori, want to welcome you here, Lori. Yeah, it's glad to have you all here this morning. All right, our invocation this morning will be given by Mr. Ricky Hatch, Pledge of Allegiance by Ryan Kelly, and the Thought of the Day by Commissioner Harvey. So we'll go to that point. Ricky?
Our dear heavenly Father, we come before thee gratefully this morning for the beautiful weather outside, for the hope of spring, for the wonderful county in which we live. We are thankful for those who founded this country, are mindful of the principles and natural law upon which so much of our government is founded. We pray that in this meeting today, we can make wise decisions that agree with those principles. Please bless those who have come to express concerns or comments, that they may do so openly and freely, and that all of us can learn and grow from those. We love thee and pray for those who are suffering throughout the world, particularly those who were victims in the Sri Lanka attacks. Ask for comfort, to be with them and their loved ones, and we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Will you all get to raise your eyes and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners and those of you in our audience, last week was a great weekend. Many in not just the United States, but around the world, it was Easter, which celebrates new life. And I watched with interest as it seemed like many of the work and bulbs that were planted earlier blossomed right at the right time. It's a beautiful time of year. But for our Culture Parks and Recreation Department, things kept humming along. You know, last week, we talked about they had 11 different events. That was last week. Let me just point out a couple of highlights from this last weekend. At our Perry's Egyptian Theater, we had the band Perry. They're a Grammy-winning award band that has done good internationally. They played to a full house this weekend. We were able to accommodate the high school, the Spikers High School rodeo with kids all over the state of Utah, and some from southern Idaho, and eastern Nevada, and western Wyoming. Plus, a team roping out at our Golden Spike. Our folks at the ice sheet are beginning to take a sheet of ice down for maintenance, so we continue that Olympic legacy. Our shooting range is experiencing record numbers of participants out on Ruland White Boulevard. Our parks will open May 1st, but only the first 200 feet going into the park, because we have too much snow everywhere else up there. And the Easter rendezvous happened out at Fort Buena Finsura. We had thousands of more guests than we've ever had before out there. We were able to, as a commission, go out and experience the rendezvous and everything that's done that's period correct out there. There's several people who volunteer and do wonderful things out there to keep things so that they're in that original state when the fort was built and maintained a couple of hundred years ago. One of them's Sue out there that runs the trading post inside the fort, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Thor. I believe it's Chuck Willis. Thor is his mountain man name. And he donates lots of times, including the little details like making sure that things that we have today, like garbage cans are hidden behind something made of wood, so they look natural, or restrooms are tucked back behind, and that the things that are enjoyed by many are more period correct. It's amazing, it's amazing that not just the muzzle loaders or the hand-hewn bows and arrows that they have out there, the Easter egg hunts they have for the kids, and on and on and on is great. But he created a little poem that I'd like to share today. It's called "Fur and Feather Work Together." So fur and feather work together. The raven soars with watchful eye to spot a carcass from the sky. His raucous call of squawking sound alerts the wolves down on the ground. The black-feathered birds descent to eat, but fur and hide protect the meat. The wolves arrive with fangs not bill, tear the flesh and eat their fill. Wolves and ravens work together, sharing bounty, fur and feather. You could apply that to a lot of things, but I thought that was kind of interesting. They handed that to us on the way in, yeah. So those are my thoughts today, commissioners and those of invitees today. Appreciate it. You bet. Thank you, Commissioner. That was wonderful. You know, we do a lot here all the time. We had, here this last winter, we had two young scouts build wood duck boxes and put them along the river down there to replace some that we'd accidentally damaged when we did the maintenance on the river. And I had the fathers of those boys contact me the other day and say, "It's the best evil projects they've ever had done." They said, "We can't believe how successful they were, how they went up like they were supposed to." And the kids were excited to see if the wood ducks will populate those boxes. So I thought that was way cool. And we're going down here in the next week or so to put some fruit trees in. That project will be finished up and buttoned up, and we'll be through. So I'm excited to have that done. It is. All right, so you know, I can never get my wife to go to any of the city council meetings when I was mayor. And now she sits home and she watches these on the internet. So if you're watching today, dear, I want to say hello to you. Yeah, that's easy. Anyway, it's funny. All right. We start these meetings every day with a public comment, or every week. And of course, I've just made mine to my dear wife. So any others that are here today who care to come up and comment, please feel free to come. We have an open mic there, and you can expend what time you want. Hockindo is County Commissioner, officially or unofficial. I don't see any. Lori, it's not like for you to come here and talk.
I know. It's hard for me to keep my mouth shut.
No, I didn't say that. I said, "It's not like you to want to spend some time at the mic." All right, thank you very much. Well, we'll go on to the next agenda today, items. First item on the agenda are the consent items. The request for approval of warrants 1765 through 1768, and 438568 through 438686, in the amount of $478,168. Next item is request for approval of purchase orders, in the amount of $117,410. Third is a request for approval of new business licenses, and fourth is a request for Weber County Animal Shelter for approval of surplus office furniture. I've had a chance to review those and found the wares. Gentlemen, either of you care to comment?
It's like a pretty light week.
Yeah, it is kind of a light week.
I'm ready. Great.
I'll make the motion we approve items F, like Foxtrot on the agenda, 1 through 4, has listed our consent items.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. First, action items today. Request for approv-- oh, Ricky, I didn't go to you on that, but they were pretty clean. I did ask you for feedback on one. Would you like to give that to me? I apologize.
You bet. So actually, I've got two for you. The rhino turf out at the jail, that's an annual maintenance agreement, so they come and do treatments to the lawn areas. So that's an annual agreement. The Boys and Girls Club, that's part of the intergenerational poverty, so that comes from grant funds. We provide some money to the Boys and Girls Club and some money to LSI.
Thank you. So on that list was a payment to Boys and Girls Club, and I just never recalled paying them.
That's what that was.
Okay, thank you. All right. First item under action items today is request for approval of a contract binding between Weber County and Weber State University for the research of the impact of the government shutdown. Hallen Willbanks.
Hello.
Mrs., how are you today?
Great, thank you. So this is a partnership between Weber State, Weber County, Ogden City, and Davis County. And they are conduct-- Weber State is conducting a survey and a comprehensive study of the impact of the federal government shutdown in northern Utah. And this is essentially our participation in that study. So it's pretty straightforward. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer those questions, but it's a pretty simple deal. They do have delivery dates on what their surveys and the data that they will provide back to the counties on the impact of any shutdown of our federal government.
Questions, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Hallen, a couple of questions. Number one, what do we hope to get out of this study for Weber County? And then, second, when do we expect to see whatever that outcome and the results be presented?
Okay, so first of all, Ogden and the surrounding areas are incredibly impacted more with the IRS than on the Hill Air Force Base. So what we're looking at is the workforce impact of the government shutdown between who was actually impacted and laid our ass to not come to work for a period of time, and then the impact of that on the county, on our local businesses, on our small businesses in the area in general. So what that did to childcare, because people weren't taking their children to daycare, what that did to 25th Street, and the impact it had overall, because there weren't as many users overall. So they're taking all of that data to understand economically what the overall impact was to northern Utah, not just to Weber County or Ogden City, but to the area as a whole, so that we know going forward how to be better prepared, as we might experience some of these going forward. The timeline on that, actually, Commissioner, it's already started. They have already started surveying federal employees. We've had two surveys go out through the county specifically here, as government employees that not necessarily were impacted by the federal shutdown, specifically as far as their employment went. However, their families or their experience here in the county, just as users in general and people that live here in the area. So that has already started. We would expect to see the results in six, nine, and 12-month delivery pace, so that we can report back on those.
So we're really looking at some type of number, economic development number, that we could say this is what the shutdown cost. That would be one of the outcomes, I'm assuming.
Essentially, the impact to workforce and the impact to our business community. So we're looking for two deliverables. As we looked at this contract, Weber State invested $4,000, Ogden City invested $4,000, and then Weber and Davis County both invested $2,000 into this study. So we will be a participant, but not at the highest rate that the other two entities were a part of.
Okay, thank you. And you know, I was at a meeting last week with some of the Forest Service people, and it was interesting to see that they're here. One of the Forest Service personnel during the shutdown was not allowed to go in his office to prepare a grant request, because it was during the shutdown, so the grant request period came and ended. So now that was, so that's an economic detriment that we may not ever hear about, but we don't hear about those type of things, so now we have to wait probably an additional year before that grant money can be reapplied.
Right.
So anyway, anything you can do to encourage the federal government to just keep on the ball.
You got it.
No questions? Any other questions? I've got a motion.
Yeah, I'd move to approve request for the contract between Weber County and Weber State University for the research on the impact of the government shutdown.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Next is request for approval of a resolution to Weber County, and actually to the County Commissioners of Weber County, appointing members to the Redevelopment Agency of the Riverdale City West Bench Project Area Taxing Entity Committee. That's a mouthful.
Sure is. It's me again.
Explain that to us, Hallen, would you?
So Riverdale City's West Bench Project Area Taxing Entity Committee was set up years ago. In fact, the last meeting was in 2012. And this entity essentially reviewed the tax increment financing requests specifically from Riverdale in the West Bench area. Since this, and we call it the Tech Committee, since this Tech Committee was formed probably 15 years ago to set these tax increment financing requests in place, there's some adjustments that Riverdale City is asking for, so we have to reinstate committee members, since Weber County is missing two. We have two vacancies for Weber County, one from Weber School District and one from the Utah State Board. So this committee will review any tax increment financing request and any changes in the existing ones that are already in place. So in the past, we've had the Economic Development Director, and we've had either Roger Brunker from Ricky Hatch's office, or Scott Park as an alternate, and we're requesting that same thing. So myself as a representative from the county for economic development, and then we're requesting Roger Brunker be the other member, and then Scott Park as an alternate, in case one of us can't make the meeting. May 23rd is the meeting that they have proposed to review a change in boundary area for an existing TIF request that we have in place at this point. So it's, we have to reinstate this board, since it was the one that put these requests in place, and so we need members to be able to do that.
Questions, Commissioners?
Hallen, aren't we anticipating some requests coming in from Riverdale for a TIF at some point in time?
This is actually the one that we've discussed, Commissioner, 700 West. It's a change in the boundary area and a little bit of a change in the infrastructure use of the dollars. So this committee has to first review that, since it was the one that put it in place.
Okay, so this is--
So there is no other one beyond that one.
So this is the same one that we've been discussing?
Yes, sir.
Just a housekeeping item, it appears.
Absolutely.
So Hallen, the question I have, is this all within Riverdale City?
Yes, sir.
So in the future, it appears to me that would be appropriate for this committee to be disbanded, and Riverdale City could just do this on their own. Now, I understand about what you're saying, about the fact that this--
Their existing commitments.
--needs to be involved with this directly. But after this is over, it appears to me they could disband this committee, or we could as the county, and they could simply deal with their own issues from here on out.
We could look at that in the future. In fact, we've changed the way internally we look at our tax increment financing, and we use that, we now turn to a committee. This committee, this RDA Review Committee, is one that looks at it from all the different budgetary aspects to protect our public financing essentially. So we've got the, our county treasurer, we've got Ricky Hatch, we've got individuals from each office to be able to review and look at those. So we're looking at things a little bit differently, rather than just essentially saying, you know, we need to support any and all development, we need to make sure that it's smart and makes sense in the long-term impacts of our budget. So the county's already turned towards that. This is in place, since it's an existing RDA that has to be looked at, and it's under the guidelines. We don't have a choice but to look at it back through the Tech Committee.
Oh, so this is tagged to the RDA?
An existing one, absolutely.
Okay, I misunderstood that. We can't really do away with that.
No, we have to keep this in place.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
I do now.
Yeah.
Very good.
And if I might add, there's a statutory requirement for RDAs that were created prior to 2012, that you have to go through this particular process. But in future projects, I mean, we'd be happy to take a look at the statute and see what your options are.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. That was Chris Crockett. Very good. No more questions? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the request resolution.
Twenty-six.
Excuse me, item?
Resolution 26.
Resolution 26, appointing members to the Redevelopment Agency at the Riverdale City West Bench Project Area.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion, a second. To that, all in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, it's a--
Oh, this is a roll call. Let's try it. Fosse-Bach?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrar?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Very good. That passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is Will Banks. Request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and William Davis and Alice Davis for right-of-way acquisitions on 12th Street.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Jared Anderson.
This contract has been long in coming. We've had a lot of conversations for a couple of years with Bill and his concerns, and have addressed them, and got, finally have gotten this contract where he's agreeable and we're agreeable, and we're ready to move forward. So I don't know if you have any questions on this?
I don't. This is a Christmas miracle.
You could say that.
Me and Commissioner Harvey actually drove out to his house one day. We sure did. Knocked on his door. Knocked on his door. About shocked him. I'm glad to see it's been solved.
Is this one of the last ones?
We have two left, so yes, it is one of the last ones, yes.
Okay, we're getting close. We're getting close.
And I think, having talked with the Davises, they feel like we're now, we've been fair, we've treated them fairly, and that's good. I like that.
Good.
So--
Motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve. Item number four, which is a request, or item number three, which is a request between Weber County and William R. and Alice N. Davis for right-of-way acquisition on West 12th Street.
Of motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that approves that. So next is you again, Jared. Request for approval of a right-of-way contract between Weber County and the following property owners to preserve right-of-way corridors on 3300 South. Ben Edwards, Galen Webb, and Lawrence Keith Martinez.
This is the first group of hopefully more residents on 3300 South that we're obtaining right-of-way through. And this is, if you remember, this is willing buyer, willing seller. So we're coming in and saying, "Hey, we've got a project, we need to obtain some right-of-way. Are you interested in selling your property?" If they're not interested, they do not have to sell. So these, got these three under contract to sell. Now, I want to make sure, I didn't realize until about 10 minutes ago, that they're all on the same item. I don't know if that's going to be a concern, whether three separate contracts that we have them on one action item, because they are three separate contracts.
We're okay here, aren't we?
I think you'd be fine to do one motion. I mean, they're each going to be signed separately, so you should be okay.
So Jared, these road right-of-ways, edges and things like that?
Yeah, what this is, is it's not, there's no construction dollars tied to this yet. Hopefully in the future, one day. All this is, is right-of-way, so they're just obtaining the right-of-way and hope for the future road that's going to be coming in.
Great.
Yep.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or motion?
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay, I'd move to approve the right-of-way contracts between Weber County and the following people to purchase property, preserve the right-of corridor for 3300 South, for Bren Edwards, Galen Webb, and Lawrence Kenneth Martinez.
Very good. Have motion?
Second with a comment, please. I want to compliment publicly those involved in our county, from not just the Community Services Department, but also from LeAnn Kiltz and the Surveyor Recorder's Office for working together and making sure that we're doing right-of-ways for the future. This is an action that protects the grandchildren of our grandchildren, and we're taking care of it now. Commissioner Jenkins, especially to you, you've made this a priority to make sure that we're, because we found ourselves in some embattlements that aren't necessary today, because we didn't do these kind of things before. So we've, we're doing this now, and that's a, I think that's good government, and I want you to know I respect and appreciate that. So my lengthy second, but there it is.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. I appreciate that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
All right. Fifth is a request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Nukuwo Group.
How you say that again?
Nukuwo.
Well.
That's a mouthful, isn't it? For optimization of Weber County Company and Printing Supplies and Services. Mr. Ricky Hatch.
All right, and--
Did I, how do you pronounce that?
I want you to keep saying it like that, because I like it. It sounds kind of--
It's teasing.
It's Nukuwo.
Nukuwo.
Yeah.
Nukuwo.
And Nukuwo is a Utah-based company, which I'll tell you just a little bit about in a minute, but--
[laughing]
But you can call it Nukuwo. That's really--
Yes.
This is another example of innovation that the county is taking care of, and this continuous mindset improvement of how can we do it better, faster, and cheaper, if possible, while still maintaining or even increasing our service to our customers. So currently, right now, in the county, it's a little bit like the Wild West when it comes to copiers and printers. Each department is on their own, they make those decisions, they do consult with our awesome IT group, but our IT department, they're not printer usage specialists, they're not salespeople for these, and so each department just kind of does it on their own, and some of them hit, get the right, exact right printer-copier for the needs they have, and some don't. And some are overutilized, and some are underutilized, and some are probably we're paying too much, and others were getting a great deal. So what Nukuwo will do is they will come in and do a full inventory of our system of copiers and printers, scanners, et cetera. And then they provide a pretty detailed analysis of that usage of that equipment, and they provide recommendations for rebalancing usage loads, possibly either getting rid of extra machines that are underutilized or too expensive. They provide cost analysis on a per-page, cost per page, and they also look at the lease versus buy decisions that we've made, and talk about the best ways to maximize or optimize those. Then, if we desire, they will actually help head up an RFP process to bring all of these copiers and printing equipment under a single vendor and under a single contract to obtain the absolute best pricing possible for the county as a whole. This would benefit then each department by consolidating those. So Nukuwo's a Utah-based company, they're growing like crazy. They're made up of individuals who used to work in the printer-copier world for years as maintenance, as sales, as management, so they understand how these contracts are written up and what's best. And they actually will help us in this RFP process negotiate with the vendor or vendors to get the absolute best, best deal that we can get. Now, the nice thing about this is that the county does not pay any upfront money for these services. This is a pay-for-success model. If through the contract, through the RFP process, Nukuwo is able to identify, and the county agrees to a contract that saves us a certain amount, saves us money, then we pay a portion of that as a pay-for-success model to Nukuwo, and that's how they earn their keep. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I would recommend approval of contract.
Questions?
You know, I read the service agreement, Ricky, and I would just congratulate you. To me, this is the type of thing we should be doing as government. We're not expanding taxpayer-- We're not expanding taxpayer dollars, but we have the opportunity to save taxpayer dollars if the event we can sharpen our skills a little bit in our purchasing and what we do with our printing services. So I think this is a great, great contract and the people of Weber County should be excited about this.
I think of that of Commissioner Ferrer. These are the type of contracts, when we do contracts with outside agency or third party or vendors, that save government money. It's a smarter way of doing business and it also infuses back money back into our economy. So you're spot on there and I'm, I like the idea, Ricky. Thank you very much for bringing that to us.
And Quinn Fowers of our IT department's been really helpful in helping consult with the process and making sure it works out.
Quinn, great job.
It should be noticed that Quinn's in the room. He's the guy in the back left that's got the glow around him. Very good.
I think his name is pronounced Q-N, actually.
Nuquin, Nuquin.
Don't mispronounce it.
No, no, you're good. You're awesome.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
So move. We approve the, well, I'll go further then. Will, I move that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and Nuquill Group. Nuquill. Nuquill Group Inc. for the optimization of county copying and printing equipment.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Ruth, thank you. Next is a request for a contract between Weber County and Stern Dirt. That I can pronounce, LLC. One-day May Mania Demolition Derby at the Golden Spike Event Center. Duncan Olson.
Morning Commissioners. Good morning. Just another awesome contract. We're excited to have another demolition derby. The reason it's before you today is we've changed the fee structure a little bit to where we charge him a bulk charge rather than line item through it. We've done better that way and we've made more money and we've been able to keep them with us instead of letting them go to some other arena, so that's why it's here.
Very good. Questions?
I like it. You ready for a motion?
I am.
I'd move to approve the contract between Weber County and Stern Dirt LLC for a one-day May Mania Demolition Derby at the Golden Spike Event.
I'll second that.
The wheels are turning.
Sometimes it's better not to say anything. I'm just gonna--
Motion is second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Thanks Commissioners.
So Duncan, before you leave.
Yeah.
Tell us a little bit about your horse races this last couple of weeks. It's over now, right?
No, we've got the finals this Saturday.
Oh, this Saturday?
So Saturday at noon, they get going, the finals for the Jake Cap as well as the Golden Spike.
So you got the horse races out there and the dairy days out there.
Yep.
Well, you got a lot going.
This is just, just another normal week for us. We're excited to have the horse racing. Last, well, two weeks ago, we had over a thousand people show up. We had some decent weather. This Saturday is looking like it's going to be right there in that perfect zone to come out and watch some horse racing, have a beverage and a pretzel and really enjoy. Something that most people don't, don't realize that we have as high quality of horse racing as we do. But even though you can't go up to the window and wager, it's going to be some good races.
Good.
Really good. You know, we're very, very close making a public announcement on something else that'll be coming having to do with horse racing. And so Duncan, I'll be excited when you get that thing locked down.
Do you get very mutual betting yet? I thought that didn't happen.
Well, they were--
No, no.
No comment, no comment.
Something like that. Yeah, that's not, yeah.
One, one day at a time.
Yeah.
Thank you, Duncan.
Thank you.
Appreciate that report. Well, Commissioners, comments?
Nothing.
You kidding me?
I know, I've made enough already.
You're speechless? I've never seen that. Have you?
I can't believe it. I'm almost speechless because he's speechless. No, I just wanted to take a second. I was at the Mountain Man rendezvous with Commissioner Harvey and I would second what he said. That was just an amazing event. I hadn't been out there for a number of years. Quite a while. And the number of people and the, really the interest that those people show out there and in showing what our history was for these Mountain Man, it's just, it's amazing. If you hadn't been there, you need to go. And I also, the time that Thor spent with us and showed us some of these hand crafts were just amazing. But lastly, you know, we have an amazing group here in Weber County and I wanted to give some recognition to our Council, Chris Crockett. You may not know this, but he is preparing to run a major marathon this Sunday, the Big Sur. And I've never, I've never run the Big Sur. I've always wanted to. I've heard good things about it. But he's been in training and for those that have done marathons, understand that it's as much mental as it is physical. He's going to have some great views running down the coastline. And Chris, good luck to you. We know that you'll represent Weber County well. So congratulations for, it's the work leading up to the marathon that's the tough part. The marathon's the celebration, as long as you've worked hard enough to earn that. And he'll know on Sunday how that worked out.
Yeah, that's good. You bet. It should be mentioned that that's the east coast, not the west coast.
No, Big Sur's the west coast.
Oh, is it the west coast?
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking it was the east coast. I stand corrected. It's the west coast. Anyway, I agree. I want to echo that. That's great, Chris.
Can I add a little corny to that?
Sure.
Good luck. I hope you win the contest. Sorry.
He did get the last word.
He did get the last word, that's right. Unless you want to knock post on it. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much for attending today, everybody.